So, moving on to the purchase of cab and chassis as well as utility trailer. PW04-19 on the bookends, not bookends, bookmarks, and 10.7 on the agenda.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just one correction, it's actually a utility tractor, not a trailer. It's just a little typo there.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, I read it from the agenda cover page.
Yeah, on the agenda, it does say a trailer, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so this report is on the results of tenders received for the purchase of a replacement cabin chassis and a new utility tractor, as well as to request council authorization to award the tender to the lowest qualifying bidders. During the 2019 budget deliberations, funds were approved for the purchase of this equipment. So tenders were received on April 9th for the cabin chassis and April 16th for the tractor. After reviewing each submission, some of the tenders received for the utility tractor did not meet the minimum required specifications and were therefore disqualified. So Team Truck Centers was the lowest bid for the diesel cabin chassis at $118,000, and McGrail Farm Equipment was the lowest compliant tender for the utility tractor at $43,900. Both tenders are below budget. Upon council approval to purchase the cabin chassis, a second tender will be issued to outfit the truck with required dump box, plows, and necessary attachments. Administration anticipates that the overall purchase price for the complete truck will be within budget. So the recommendation is that the purchase of the cabin chassis and the utility tractor from the low bidders, as detailed in the report, be approved. Thank you.
Counsel? Questions? Comments or motion? Question, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So through you, worthy mayor, to Ken. So we are getting some money back for the 2009, but the tractor is a new purchase, or is there any trade-in there?
Through you, Mayor. It would be a new purchase, basically with the addition of the extra demands from the waterfront, as well as the extra sidewalks that we maintain in the winter. I just got some rough numbers, like back in 2013, we had 67 kilometers of sidewalk, and now we're over 80, about 82 kilometers, so it's almost a 20 percent increase. We're finding it can take 10, 11, 12 hours to get through the sidewalks once. So this additional tractor will actually help us to try and get it back to being able to complete the job within eight hours without having to pay overtime. We do have a utility tractor, it's a number 63, it's a 2009. We were originally thinking of trading that in this year for this new tractor. It has a little over 6,000 hours on it. We've had to repair the PTO on it once. The reason we're not requesting to trade it in right away is because it's the only utility tractor that is big enough to handle our bat wing mower. And we actually experienced last year a situation where our tractor broke down, and that's the mower that cuts the soccer fields, the baseball, all of our big parks. And when we have users playing seven days a week at these facilities, and we can't cut the grass, and it's turning into a hay field, we were a little bit stressed out. So we kind of thought, we're kind of, we'd like to go this season and just see how we make out. We have three tractors that every day in the summertime are out there daily, doing the beach grooming, mowing with the gang mower, floating diamonds at the baseball. Then we need another one for lots of tasks, like aerating, spreading fertilizer, maintaining the trails. So we never have a tractor that's just sitting around doing nothing. So we feel we put it to good use, and that one tractor that does have 6,000 hours on it would be the first to go if we don't find that we need it. But that's why we kind of felt we should keep it, just as a backup, especially for the mowing.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Counsel Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to know from the rest of council here, am I the only one up here that's, again, we've done this in the past, I don't know how many times. It's like asking for the tender results, you know, it's been discussed, I don't know how many times, but we've seen close tenders come in with a local player, and each time it makes me ill. It just doesn't sit right in my stomach, and I know we got a policy on hand to go with the lowest, the lowest bid is policy. In this case, it's $3,430, or 2.82 percent decrease. I'd like to, you know, I say this after we do it each time, is I wish we'd relook at this policy. You know, there's nothing to say we can't relook at this policy and discuss it. I see the CEO has raised his hand, so there's probably a good comeback here, and I should listen to it first.
Yeah, it might be a good idea.
Absolutely. But anyway, that's where this counselor's at here. I hope it gets some discussion going.
Mr. Newfelt.
Well, I think that there's a difference between a policy and the law, the application of the law. Is that enough? No, you know, we would love to be able to see our local businesses be successful in these biddings as well. And we have talked about this, but if we start limiting who can bid for the work here, then what's going to happen when other municipalities start to do that as well, and inadvertently our local businesses are restricted from bidding in other municipalities? Suddenly, the taxpayer isn't getting the best deal necessarily. So it is a conundrum, but it's not a policy, it's the law.
Thank you, Peter. I'll probably ask you the same question again about six months from now, okay?
And hopefully, I'll give you the same answer.
Counsel Teason.
In response to you, Mr. Wilkinson, I think we've got to remember what's local. In the ag industry, Maidstone is local, London is local, Chatham is local. There's stuff that we can't necessarily get. We've only got one from Leamington. Unfortunately, it wasn't the lowest bid. I think we've got to go with the lowest bid, and I think we've got to, let's not think of local as Leamington. You know yourself, the company you work for, they're not just in Leamington, they're all over. If we can get it in Ontario, that's great, as long as we can get maintenance. And Maidstone, that's not that far to go to get maintenance either. So I've got no problem with that. And again, if we're only going to put our bids to one company, we know what's going to happen, that price is just going to keep going up.
With that being said, I would entertain a motion. Moved by Counsel Jacobs, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All in favor? That's carried, thank you, Mr. Brown. And now, moving to the Highbury-Cancow pedestrian crossing. And that is... ENG 0719, Mr. Botham.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to seek direction from council regarding the crosswalk on Erie Street South, about 145 meters south of the Oak Street intersection. As well as background, the Ontario Highway Traffic Act defines that there are two types of pedestrian crossings, controlled crossings and uncontrolled crossings. And in September of 2018, we had a consultant, R.C. Spencer, look at this crossing, and they noted in their report to us that the crossing at Highbury-Cancow is an uncontrolled crossing at the present time, such that there's no restrictions placed on pedestrians crossing at this location, except that they must look to ensure that they may cross safely. In that same report, R.C. Spencer noted that the subject area is a relatively busy crossing, and the data they collected supported the conclusion that the crossing is a pedestrian desire line, which supports the installation of some type of controlled crossing. Within that study, R.C. Spencer also affirmed Dylan's conclusion from 2013 that a mid-block pedestrian signal is not justified by way of the prescribed signal warrants and the signal warrant analysis. So two PXO crossings have been recommended by administration in previous reports. PXO across Erie Street, which would have a cross-section with one lane of vehicle travel in each direction and one bike lane, and that reflected the vision of the Active Transportation Master Plan. We also presented a PXO crossing of Erie Street South without bike lanes, with the southbound Erie Street South traffic merging into one lane at the crossing in front of Highbury. Both those PXO crossings would comply with the MTO guidelines, as they result in a change to Erie Street from a four-lane cross-section to a three-lane cross-section. In December of 2018, council approved the installation of a PXO across Erie Street without bike lanes, with the southbound Erie Street traffic merging into one lane at the crossing location. And then in February of 2019, council passed a resolution to reconsider that decision and directed administration to report back to council. It's our opinion, it's administration's opinion, that the options to install a controlled pedestrian crossing that were presented previously in Engineering 2818, which is appended to this report, were exhaustive. The only practical options remaining for council, if council chooses or does not wish to install a controlled pedestrian crossing at this location, would be to revert to an uncontrolled crossing or install a mid-block pedestrian signal. Just to review, the existing crossing there is a courtesy crossing, and it was installed during an era when there was a lack of design guidance, and the courtesy crossing infrastructure should not remain regardless, now that design criteria has been established. Uncontrolled crossings clearly place the onus on the pedestrian to wait until it's safe to cross. If council directs an uncontrolled crossing at this location, the municipality could encourage pedestrians to cross at the controlled crossing, which is at the Erie and Oak intersection. Existing curb cuts and sidewalk extensions that were built to allow fully accessible pedestrian access should be removed, as not to promote or encourage crossing at this Just of note, in Engineering 2818, we looked at the option of improving signage without a PXO, and that was presented, and it was explored further by administration, and we've since removed that as a possible option due to the non-conformity with the recent MTO So we also talked about the introduction of a mid-block pedestrian signal. That would result in continuing two lanes of traffic in each direction, but due to the proximity of that new signal, we're anticipating that delays would cause, just in the signal timing and coordination, would cause delays and frustrations for motorists and pedestrians. It's likely that pedestrians would continue to cross and wait for gaps and cross Erie Street, rather than waiting for the light to change, and that could leave traffic stopped with no pedestrians on either side that are ready to cross. The decision to remove an existing uncontrolled crosswalk is difficult and must be managed with due care and concern. Public and private advertising and awareness campaign should be conducted, notifying Highbury-Cancow with the expectation that the company would notify all workers and that they would erect signage to direct pedestrians north to the traffic signal at Erie Street, and that we would do the same. So we're left with the three options proposed in the report. We're proposing that council select one of the following three. Controlled PXO be installed, and the PXO be designed according to Option 2 or 3 that were presented previously in Engineering 2818. And again, that's appended to this report. Option 2 would be a mid-block pedestrian signal, and Option 3 would be that the infrastructure that's associated with the existing courtesy crossing, that's located approximately 145 meters south of Oak Street, be removed, causing the area to be an uncontrolled pedestrian crossing, and that signage be erected in the area to direct pedestrians to cross Erie Street, at the Erie Street and Oak Street intersection. Administration would recommend Option 1. For council's information, the 2019 budget includes a $100,000 budget, which is funded from federal gas tax for the installation of a controlled pedestrian crossing, previously The approximate cost to remove the existing crossing system, the existing courtesy crossing, and the ramps, and reinstate the boulevards would be approximately $10,000. And we included that the approximate cost of a mid-block pedestrian signal would be
Thank you, Mr. Botham. Counsel Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'll start this off, I'm sure there's going to be some discussions on this, but anyway. I've given this one a lot of thought as well. I've gone over it, watched it, drive down every day to see what's going on. There's a lot of activity that does cross there, but the thing that really got me going the other day, I'm sitting there and I'm watching from the parking lot that's on the, I guess, the northeast corner of Oak and Erie. The individuals that park in that lot, but are right next to the stoplight, don't cross at the stoplight, they walk halfway through the block and cross Kitty Corner, going across that road. You know, looking at this and the amount of money that we're looking to put out, these are all, I guess, responsible individuals that are working. There's a crosswalk, single-activated, at the corner, and even if we put up a pedestrian crossing, I'm sure there's going to be traffic crossing in the middle of the road, too. I guess right up front, I'm not going to be supporting any other option than Option Number 3, where we remove what's existing, and that Highbury direct their staff to go to the intersection, and I guess these are creatures of habits, so no matter what we put up there, they're going to cross anyway. So I think our due diligence in this particular area is that we remove what's there, and I think stewards of our funds that we are delegated here at council, that we distribute, I can't see spending that kind of money to put that up there. When there's a crosswalk there, these are all adults, supposedly responsible individuals, so I think that, in their own health and safety, that they could walk to the corner and cross at the proper location, because I don't think we're ever going to stop them. I don't care if you put three lights up there, they're going to cross where they want. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Jacobs. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worthy mayor. For such an important issue, I'm surprised that nobody's here from the factory. That's okay. That being said, I had to pick up somebody in my family, and I parked on that side lot, so I know now we're going to close that, and I hope they're aware that if you go with this option, that they're going to close those extra parking lanes there, probably on the top where that white car is, which I guess would be okay. However, sitting there waiting to pick up somebody, there was somebody, I couldn't get out because my passenger got in the vehicle, and there was a car parked in the through lane. So I'm just envisioning this, too, thinking about this, because I brought it back up, that what happens if there's only one lane, and there's no parking on the side? So are they, this one car going to hold up the southbound lane? Because it's restricted to one lane. I don't know if that's been looked at. 475 feet to the crosswalk, well, it's a little jaunt, but I have seen it where people have crossed wherever they want, and that's what we're worried about the high school, too, they're going to cross wherever they want. We tried to move them, and we have done a good job with that, moving them to controlled crossings. And also, a friend of mine almost hit a kid last month. This big steak truck parked beside it stopped, the cars just kept coming, so she didn't even slow down, and the person never even looked ahead of this 10-wheeled truck. So if you're going to do anything, the PXO has to be higher than the truck. So I'm not, I'd rather see a light than a PXO or nothing. So I'm probably going to move towards the nothing, not Option 3, Option 4, which would be just remove it, and notify me when you're going to remove it, and we're still going to have people stopping one way or another, and it's just like the old high school, they had a courtesy cross, but they never crossed, 90 percent of them crossed wherever they wanted to the parking lot, so, and what are you going to do? And the lady that almost hit the person is my insurance agent, so, and we talked about that, too, what would happen, who's liable? Well, she's liable, we're liable, everybody's liable. If it's a controlled intersection, technically, you're supposed to wait till the person's out of the intersection before you go either. Nobody's following that rule either, so I'm not really, I have no warm and fuzzy feeling here with this. Mine is still the same as before, I think we have to look at it a different way, and I was hoping that when we brought this back to administration, that administration would come up with another brilliant, stellar master plan, other than the three options.
Well, I think they're making us use our own brain cells to come to a decision, so we've been given three options, which I don't think is a bad thing. We just have to step up and make the decision, that's what we're here for. Just a comment, sorry.
Mr. Newfelt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification, the area that you, that Counsel Verbeke had indicated where the white car is or the parking, I don't believe that there are any plans to remove Certainly, we had, administration had looked at that, and one of the concerns is exactly what you noted, is that if we close that up, we could start seeing cars stopping in the through lane. Now, the way you deal with that is ensure that there's proper enforcement, especially in the early parts, during the early days of the change. But I think, just for clarification, I don't think that there, that we are expecting to close those, at least not as it is related to this report.
Further to that, Deputy Mayor.
Then I know with, I'm just going by what memory I have left, but I also want to know that we had a car count. Do we ever have a pedestrian count?
Mr. Sheridan? It's in the report. No worries. Counselor Teason.
In the report, we keep referring to this as an uncontrolled crossing. If we take it out, it is not a crossing. It's not an uncontrolled crossing, it's not a crossing, it's a highway. And I go back to, this is a four-lane, this is a major thoroughfare through our town. If we start having merging lanes, we all know what happens with emerging lanes, one car tries to beat the other, and I think it creates a more dangerous situation than that taking it out, leaving it four lanes. It's not that far to walk to the corner. Again, if it's for the Highbury employees, they've got other options that they can cross. I think the safest thing to do in this case is just to remove it and educate the people not to cross there. People are going to do what they want anyways. Let's just take a look down at the Roma Club, when they cross over to the liquor store, and they cross right at the laneway going in. That is such a congested area, and people are crossing, and they've got a PXO that they can go to down the street. And people that go to the PXOs don't necessarily use them. Many times, I'm driving up to a PXO, you see the person coming, I'm expecting him to push the button, I'm slowing down already, they don't push the button. When I get beside them, now they're stepping out into the street without ever using it. These crossings give the people a false sense of security. They shouldn't be in a high-traffic area, they shouldn't be in a four-lane highway. Let them go down to the controlled crossing 400 feet away.
Thank you, Counsel Hammond.
Your worship, thank you. I'd like to begin by asking either Al or Rob, have you spoken to the Highbury officials and got their opinion on what they believe would be a safe manner in handling this?
Your worship, over the years, we've had various communications with different individuals at Highbury, somewhat conflicting positions to a certain degree. Previous requests from the HR manager to have a light at the intersection, most recently, I think council will recall, when we discussed this in December, Joan Kruger was here from Highbury and told council that their position was, this is a matter for the municipality to determine, you know, it's not their role to develop or design crossings, they just feel what there is currently isn't safe. So we have discussed it with them.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So further to that, in the event that the option is chosen to put a traffic light there, have they indicated at all that they feel they have any financial obligation to help? I mean, we know that these are their employees, that need to be, you know, need to be kept safe. It's like buying safety shoes. Have they made any reference to the fact that they'd be willing to help with respect to the cost?
If you, your worship, haven't posed that direct question to them, Counselor, other than the fact that they've made it clear to us that they feel that infrastructure in the right of way is the municipality's responsibility.
So, thank you, Rob, and I anticipated both of those answers. I'm going to go in a little different direction than the balance of council here, and that is, yeah, in looking at this, there's about, in an eight-hour shift, about 80 to 100 persons across there. Do I agree that they're going to cross somewhere else or in mid-block? Yeah, we've all seen them do it, we know that that's exactly what's going to happen. But to have an uncontrolled crossing, to eliminate the hash marks on the road, to take the signs down, to take that little piece of sidewalk out that leads to where the curb dips out, to me is not the answer, because, you know, God forbid, we had one person lose their life there, and I've labored with this, and in fact, my family and I don't agree with what I'm about to say, but, you know, to having cars held up for a few seconds, whether it be eight or 10 seconds, for an additional light, to me doesn't measure up to the cost of someone being either killed or badly hurt at that intersection. So when I vote, I'm going to be voting in favor of putting a traffic light there.
Which is Option 2? Mid-block pedestrian signal, rather than a controlled PXO. Well, I guess I better tell you what I think. I think when we put that crosswalk in, I remember I was on council, took the recommendation of the engineer at the time and put the crosswalk there. I think we started this allowing and showing the employees that it was okay to cross there. But that was probably 12 years ago, at least more than 10 years ago, and I do believe the traffic has changed. Couple of weeks ago, there was a semi-truck, for lack of a better word, loaded up, probably waiting to deliver something to Heinz, and he was parked in the left lane going south, just parked. You should have seen the chaos from the drivers that turned left to go on to Erie South, to see there was only one lane. It was chaos. And I think if we reduce the lanes down to one, we're going to see that same thing. It may just be fender benders, but it'll still be a bunch of accidents. I don't think changing it to that's going to solve the problem. And we're even out here, when I'm sitting in my office and I look out here and people press that crossing light, cars don't stop, those people still go sailing through. And I agree with you, Counsel Teason, we give them a false sense of security that that light's going to save their tail. I'm going to agree with Option 3 and getting rid of it. We are so, a society that mollycoddles everybody. We have to put, don't put your pet in the microwave to dry its fur, this coffee is hot, do not cross. Seriously? Seriously? We need to say, this is not acceptable here. You are in danger of losing your life, and I still, I agree with you, that if a truck is parked, stopped, the people coming in that left-hand lane, they're is, is parked, stopped, the people coming in that left-hand lane, they're not going to see that light. It happened to me a number of weeks ago, I was badly shaken up. Again, I'm sailing north, I think I told you, I was sailing north, all of a sudden I thought, oh, why is that car stopping? Oh my gosh, there's somebody walking, not even paying any attention. When you've got four lanes there, I just think that you're setting people up to be injured. Am I going to own this? No. Do I think council should own this, that we're putting people in danger? Heck, no. The minute you become a free-thinking adult, you need to have some kind of mechanism up here that tells you you don't walk in front of a fast-moving car. It, it needs to be that. We, we can't keep doing this, that, that we are so afraid of everything that we do that we start thinking for our people. To me, Highbury can, quite frankly, should own some of this. I do believe it. And to tell us that they can't tell their people what to do after their working hours, those people aren't always crossing after working hours, they're crossing in the middle of the day. They're crossing from one side to the other to work in a different building. If they were that concerned, they should be using their overhead tunnel, or whatever you call it. I'm not owning this. If someone gets hurt, it's because they did not look both ways, they took it into, into their own hands to cross at a heavy-traffic point in the road. It's not on us. Maybe legally it's on us, but, but to my way of thinking, we need to remove the signage and the symbols on the road that show, yes, you can cross here, and to me, the only way to do it is that. Quite frankly, I would like to take out those cuts. Again, why? Walk, for heaven's sakes. We're, we're promoting seawats, we're promoting bike trails, and then we're saying, oh, here, don't get wet, you, you need to park in front of the door. My husband always wants to drop me off in front of something like Shopper's, I'm like, I can walk, I walk every morning, I can walk from my car to the door. People need to, to take ownership of some of this stuff. Other people, it can't always be the municipality that owns it. So for that reason, I'm going to support option three, because I think it's time that people took responsibility for their own actions. It's not our fault, it needs to be theirs. And if, and, and quite frankly, if Highbury doesn't like it, then take some ownership and educate your people. So, another soapbox stepped off of. Councillor Hammond?
Mayor, you know I agree with everything you've said, you know, and I understand that, I think I said the last time, it's too bad that we have to think for those that don't think for themselves. But I'm going to go one step a little further. If we, if we choose to eliminate the, and it looks like that's the way it's going to go, I think we need to approach Highbury and ask them about putting a railing down one side of that street from one, from the traffic light all the way up. That railing has worked at the high school, except now, too, there's a ditch that they have to breach if they want to, if they want to go across to the restaurant across the road. But at least now, and every time I've been by, nobody's jumped over that railing. So I think, and it doesn't have to be on both sides, it just has to be on one, because they don't want to run across and jump over it. So my recommendation, if, if in fact, option three is accepted, is that we, we approach them about getting them to put a railing all the way down. And again, make them take some ownership to protect their workers.
Glad you brought up the high school, because that reminds me that we all felt very strongly that the kids needed to use the stoplight, and we were not going to refuse Carmen's catering, the ability to be there, because we thought kids were smart enough to cross. So really, we should all be thinking the same way on this one, no offense. We probably lost our option tonight for a free railing, just want to say. Mr. Sharon?
Your worship, I just want to, you know, to Councillor Hammond's point, you know, I want to caution council on, you know, the thought of putting some sort of physical barrier there to prevent crossing. Certainly, when site plans are being developed, we put our minds to that, but where's the infrastructure, where are the entrances, how within a site do you direct people to basically funnel them and cross at particular locations? This is a site that's already built, with two main entrances, you know, right there on either side. We specifically asked the traffic engineer to explore that consideration of some sort of physical barrier, flat-out, you know, did not recommend it, recommended against it for a number of different reasons, you know, including the potential of people getting trapped in there if you have these barriers on either side of the road, and a number of different issues that it creates, safety issues, sightline issues, road maintenance issues. So we can, and it is our intention, after council makes their decision tonight, to reach out to Highbury and sit down and talk to them and say, this is the direction council's going with the crossing, you know, and here's what we recommend you do, insofar as notifying and educating your staff. I mean, we can look at the site to, you know, determine, is there any possibility of them putting fences across certain entrance doors, but it's highly unlikely that, you know, where this crossing location is, between the two main entrances, one on the east building and one on the west, you know, that, that, it's highly unlikely that there's anything practical that could happen, you know, that would deter people coming out of those locations, at least, from crossing at the location. And we, again, we intend to, you know, we're going to explore the idea of putting up signage to encourage it, but, but the idea of a physical barrier to prevent it is likely not going to work at that particular location.
Those entrances have been there for many, many years, before we even had that crosswalk there, so, just want to say that. And you know, as far as the drop-off goes, I don't know why they can't use, you know that little insert where they, I don't know if their executives park there, that could be used as a drop-off, rather than using the curb cuts. Quite frankly, they would have a spot that they could put, you know, five minutes stopping only, and allow their, their employees to be dropped off safely, without being in the curb cut. I just want to say that I don't want to take this any further than option three, but that is certainly something that we could suggest to them, and at some point, we reinstate where the curbs should be, rather than doing that, because I still think we're promoting crossing there. Okay, council, what are your wishes? Councillor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I propose that we remake a motion to accept option number three, which is removal of the current, I guess for lack of a better term, whatever is there now, we'll get rid of it, and-
The courtesy crossing.
Exactly.
Moved by Councillor Jacobs, seconded by Councillor Thiessen. Are there any more comments or questions? All in favor?
Pardon? Yes, Councillor Thiessen? No, that's fine.
Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Botham. Now we're moving on to the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Programme Rural and Northern Stream grant application. That is Report IS-03-19, also known as Report 10-11. Rob, Sharon?
Your worship, the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Programme is a federal programme designed to create long-term economic growth, build inclusive, sustainable and resilient communities, and support a low-carbon economy. The province of Ontario is a cost-sharing partner in these programmes with the federal government. Under this particular intake of this rural and northern communities' funding stream, Ontario is supporting transportation priorities of small rural and northern communities. Ontario municipalities with a population of a hundred thousand or less are eligible for funding in this particular round. Eligible assets include road, bridge, air and marine infrastructure. Eligible project types include new construction, rehabilitation and replacement work. Each eligible applicant can submit a maximum of one project for submission. Projects will be assessed by the provincial government and nominated to the federal government for approval. Applications and all supporting documentation must be submitted by May 14th. The province estimates that they will notify applicants of their project in the summer of two thousand, of approval of their project and submission to the federal government in the summer of this year. Applicants are expected to be notified regarding the success or failure of their application in the, in the late summer, early fall of 2019, and then if that project's approved, we have until October 31st, 2026, to complete the project. Projects submitted will be assessed based on the criticality of health and/or safety risks, technical merits of proposed project, funding need for the proposed project and efficiencies through joint project considerations. And the maximum total eligible cost per project for a single applicant is $5 million. Applicants must pay for all ineligible costs on their own, as well as cover any cost overruns on the project. Cost overruns reflect any costs that exceed the total project value submitted at the time of application. An eligible community may request funding up to eighty-three point three percent of a project's total eligible costs. So an example of that is if you have a project that is the maximum of $5 million, you can submit for up to $4.16 million of that project. If your project exceeds $5 million, as is the case in our recommendation to council, the maximum funding would still be the $4.16 million. Administration is recommending to council that we submit an application for the funding of Seacliff Drive, for the reconstruction of Seacliff Drive East. In 2013, council adopted the environmental assessment report prepared by Stantec Consulting as the basis for future design and construction of Seacliff Drive East, from approximately Cherry Lane to County Road 33. This total study area was divided into four phases. The application for this particular funding stream will be limited to the construction of Phases One and Two, and then Phases Three and Four would be constructed at a later date, after the construction of Phases One and Two, and as funding permits. So the problem identification presented in the EA when we were looking at Seacliff Drive, including road widening requirements, as well as upgrades and improvements, and due to the existing design of the road and poor drainage, projected increase in overall traffic volumes, and I think that is a very important factor for council to consider in this particular discussion, is that if you look at Leamington and our growth areas, in particular our residential growth areas, we are growing to the southeast, and Seacliff Drive will, is and will become an even more important corridor for that development and the residents living there. Changes in the patterns of traffic to the east of the urban centre, anticipated major residential commercial development to the northeast-southeast, based on the municipality's OP, and the construction of the east-side arterial road, which intersects Seacliff Drive. Seacliff Drive East is classified as an arterial road in our OP. Existing roadway and roadside drainage requires significant improvement. Existing conditions will not support current and future development within the municipality as identified in the OP. So when we did the environmental assessment, the preferred alternative included complete reconstruction to increase road width and adopt an urban cross-section. This includes additional centre-turn lane, curb and gutter, proper drainage, bike lanes and sidewalks. Safety to motorists, cyclists and pedestrians are improved with the adoption of this road profile. Again, I believe the number-one scoring criteria when the province and feds evaluate our submission. The updated 2019 cost estimates for the construction of Phases One and Two of the Seacliff Drive reconstruction project total $5.7 million. Administration is recommending to council that we seek funding of $2.9 million, or fifty-eight percent of the $5 million maximum eligibility, or put another way, fifty point nine percent of the total project costs. While the municipality could seek funding up to the $4.16 million for this project, administration cautions against this approach, as it is likely that such a request will reduce our chances for a successful application through this competitive process. We have to recognize how much money is available and what size of the pie we represent in this province and in this particular population category. The municipality has already identified the $2.8 million of local funding that would be included in the submission within our five-year capital plan and the sewer and engineering budgets for 2020 and 2021. If approved for funding, this project would not require major amendments to our existing five-year capital plan, but will allow the reconstruction to occur up to Bevel Line. As approved in the 2019 budget, Leamington will continue with the $175,000 design assignment for the traffic signal at Cherry Lane and Seacliff, and the road design to Regatta. These particular expenditures, because of when they're occurring, which is now, will not be eligible for grant funding, but if approved, the actual work to do the reconstruction will be approved. If approved, the Phase One and Two project will likely span the fiscal years 2020 through And so the recommendation before council tonight is that council approve an application to the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Programme Rural and Northern Stream for the reconstruction of Seacliff Drive East from Cherry Lane to Bevel Line.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. Council? Councillor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I want to thank Rob, I think that you've demonstrated in the past that you've been very successful in your applications that you put forward. We've been the recipient of a significant amount of funds, and I like the strategy that you're using, don't go for the whole banana, but let's just get a part of it here, so, that's great. And with that, I would move your recommendation.
Moved by Councillor Jacobs then, and seconded by Councillor Hammond. Comments or questions? All in favor? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the final tax levy bylaw. Ms. Roach?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. The report before you tonight confirms the 2019 tax rates is approved during the budget discussions earlier this year. The bylaw for council to consider establishes final tax due date of Wednesday, June 19th, and September 18th. The 2019 budget included a properties tax increase of 1.8 percent to both the sewer and general levies. The final tax levy will include the municipal portion, county and educational taxes, BIA levies, parking, garbage levy, local improvement and sewer fee annual repayments, the 2018 maintenance drainage charges, as well as the capital drain loan repayments. The final billing will be reduced by the interim taxes billed to property owners in January. This report also recommends that council consider repealing policy F-22 grace period at the end of this fiscal year. This policy was established in 1999, likely pre-amalgamation, to allow for payments to be accepted by mail and processed without penalty for two days after the due date. Today, almost seventy percent of the property tax payments are received through an electronic method. In addition, administration is hoping to modernize the online payment functionality through the website this year, and will allow even more payment options for Leamington residents. The elimination of this policy establishes a firm due date, and it also creates equity for the interest calculation consistent with all other municipal billing practices, including dog tags, the complex and the marina. Administration is recommending this policy be repealed at the end of this year to allow an opportunity for appropriate communication to be provided to Leamington residents on this change. Grace periods, if supported by council, would no longer be offered by, for 2020 property tax payments. The number of property owners impacted by this change will be minimal. For our recent installment for 2019 interim, interim taxes, approximately eighty payments were taken on Thursday of last week, and another eighty-seven payments were taken today. So it's approximately one percent of our tax, or our number of properties. In 2018, the municipality earns just over $500,000 on interest and penalty for outstanding accounts. The 2019 budget conservatively estimates these revenues to be $460,000. Just for information for council, included in the final tax billing, as council had requested, there will be a fire safety campaign insert included. Public education on fire safety is an ongoing effort by fire services. In coordination with fire and the Communications Department, messaging to property owners on the importance of working fire alarms will be provided through a mail insert when the tax, or the final tax notices are delivered this, this May. So therefore, it's recommended that council repeal policy F-22, named grace period effective December 31st, 2019, and council consider bylaw number 26-19 to provide for the 2019 final tax levy for the municipality of Leamington. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Council? Questions? Councillor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Laura, the 1.25 percent per month, what's that translate per year?
Thank you, Laura. Counsel? Questions? Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Laura, the 1.25% per month, what's that translate per year? Around?
It's just over 13.25. It compounds, right? So if your, if your amount is outstanding, so it's just over 13%.
That's pretty heavy, isn't it?
It's really, it's more than that, sorry.
Sounds like a credit card. Counsel's wishes? Moved by Counselor Thiessen, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All in favor? Comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you again. Laura, I'm really pleased to hear that you're going to drop something in the, in each tax notice with respect to the, to the fire obligations for those that maybe don't know that those rules and laws apply, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And then we're moving on to the CAO's report. CAO 05-19, the Business Development Mission to the Netherlands.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Mayor. As you can see, the recommendation is that council authorize the Mayor Hilda McDonald and I as the CAO to participate in a, in a business development mission organized by the Windsor Essex Economic Development Corporation to travel to the Netherlands from June 18th to the 15th in order to attend the Green Tech Amsterdam Conference scheduled for June 11th to the 13th, and take in some additional tours of businesses in Amsterdam, especially relating to the greenhouse industry. Some of the background on this is that we became aware through the town of Kingsville that WITC was organizing a, a trade mission to the European business community to, to see what their expansion readiness is to expand into Canada and to facilitate some connections for our local firms. So becoming aware of this, and especially given some of the issues, the current issues that we are, we as a municipality, and Kingsville is experiencing much the same, the fast growth of the greenhouse industry is bringing with it some of the difficulties or issues that arise out of that fast growth and the growing practices, not the least of which is light pollution and odor. And so one of the things that we are looking at is going to gain information and see the businesses that exist in Netherlands who are frontrunners in this kind of new technology as it relates to things like light abatement for greenhouses and odor abatement. And to that end, we will also be reaching out, WITC has reached out to a local business that has a sales presence here in, in Leamington, but is centered in Amsterdam, as well as other businesses in Amsterdam that will provide tours of their, their plants so that we can get a sense of what the newest technology is and the practices in dealing with these greenhouse issues. So the opportunity comes up, and we're bringing this to council. You can see that the costs are approximately $800 per person for the round-trip flights, and accommodations are estimated to be about $3,000 per person. While we would be in the Netherlands, the cost of the conference, as well as any travel associated with, with the planned tours would be part of, would be covered by the Windsor Essex Economic Development Corporation. And so we bring this to council for discussion and, and for your approval.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If you, if you go, you're going to be in trouble, and if you don't go, you're going to be in trouble. So I just want to know, so this was done by WITC, did the initiative, now did WITC contact any growers? Maybe to, like, or maybe, do you know? Are there going to be growers going? I guess I should ask you that, or do you know?
During a recent conference call, is my understanding that the ideal initially was that Windsor Essex Economic Development Corporation was going to travel with current businesses in order to have a business-to-business kind of connection. So our local businesses and growers were invited to indicate their, their interest in this kind of a trip, and my understanding is that none were interested at this time. That being said, then the organizers from WITC explained that in a recent trip to India, you may recall there was some story about that in Windsor Star, that this is a model that they are becoming more aware of, is that they travel ahead of time first to get a sense of the businesses, to make some business contacts with organizations like our Economic Development Corporation or municipalities that are interested in creating a relationship, and then coming back and bringing those contacts back to the local businesses, and then planning a second trip out, bringing the businesses with them to create the business-to-business contact. So that's the model that they are finding works well, and that's what they are importing here. But I do know, or it is my understanding, that businesses from this area were invited, including growers, and that there was no initial uptake for this offering. Thank you.
Counsel Wilkinson, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is money well spent, very well spent for being the region of agriculture we are. We are the heavyweights when it comes to greenhouse industry in North America. We need to be abreast of the latest technology out there, and the Europeans have definitely been the ones that have showed away, and it's, you know, showed up in our areas here as well, all the European technologies coming over here. Back when we were in the election time and just your coffee time with the mayor here a few weeks ago, marijuana is a big issue in this town now that's been brought upon us in the last two, three years. At some point, this council has to have the discussion, and I'm not looking forward to it, but we need to talk about odor and light control as a result of that. So I really look forward to hearing the options and, you know, the reports that'll come down the road, because if we're going to be the heavyweights, the leaders in the greenhouse industry, we got to also, you know, lead the way with, you know, as a municipality, how do we deal with the impacts around that? So money well spent, happy to support it, and I would throw a move, I would move to spend for the trip.
So you're making the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second for that? Counselor Hammond? All in, did you want to comment on it?
I did. I will second it with the comment that I think too, along with the comments made by, along with the comments made. You want to vote on it first?
No, it's fine. We'll finish the comments, as long as we stick to.
Yep. Along with the comments made by Counsel Wilkinson too. I think that, you know, noise, not noise, but smell abatement, light abatement has really come to the forefront here. We can be told a lot of things, but unless you see it, you don't know what questions to ask unless it's in front of you to ask those questions. So I agree hardly. I think a trip would be well worthwhile.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this trip's long overdue, personally. Our industry here, the greenhouse, has gone so high-tech and the automation and everything else goes with it, and it's all being developed, manufactured, and sent us from your destinations. And I think that, like, we're not waiting for someone to knock on our door. I think it's important that you're knocking on their door and show them what we have to offer here, how can we support them? And to me, that's, that's more important than, I'm not to get away from light abatement or anything else, but I think that we need to encourage them to set up shop here where everything is happening. And I know that they send a lot of their employees over, you know, to look at these products and bring them back and learn how to fix the machinery and everything else, when they could be building all that stuff right here. And so I think it's important. I look forward to the contacts that you make. I hope you're very successful in that. And as I said before, I think this trip is long overdue to, to show them what we have to offer them here. Thank you.
I'm going to comment after the vote, if I can. So if you're finished, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. I just wanted to tell you, I've started doing some homework on this trip because back in 2007, it was also proposed that some members of council take a trip to Holland under John Adams, the mayor at the time. We had a local business that served the greenhouse that came forward and spoke loudly against it, and we caved. So I felt it incumbent upon myself to start doing a little bit of homework to see what kind of support was out there, particularly in the greenhouse industry. And so I had lunch with a couple of growers today. They're looking at sales, maintenance, and service located here. They're not looking at manufacturing, because Amsterdam is so well-placed on the coast, on the sea, that they can manufacture there and ship directly all over the world. But so much is done here. For example, I spoke with Aphria, and their one automation contract was worth $40 million just to Holland. So they bought the materials. Those materials are not available here. The supplier that came to speak last time, what he sells is not going to be impacted by people that we can bring here. It will make it easier for the growers that we have to connect with their sales and their maintenance people for the different supplies. Cucumber seeds come from Holland. 100 million seeds for 2,000 acres of greenhouses at 90 cents a seed is a lot of money. So there's lots of money coming here from Holland already. Again, we're not looking to replace our businesses that are already flourishing, servicing the greenhouse industry. We're just looking to expand, make it easier, make some connections, do some homework. Again, the growers were all in favor of this because they already do a lot of business with those companies. I toured the greenhouse and took number, a number of photos with the "Made in Holland" symbol on the equipment. Again, they also, when they bring in this equipment, they're hiring engineers, they're hiring electricians, whatever else, welders. I spoke to many people and saw lots of gentlemen today that are from Leamington that are working in the specialized skilled trades servicing these, putting this equipment in. So again, I just wanted you to know that it isn't what it used to be. These people are already here. They're the only ones in the world doing this stuff. So we need to know what it is. We need to know if we can supply them a place to do their business in North America, particularly when we are the hub in North America. In Holland, they have many more acres of greenhouses than we do. Their rules, their regulations, their bylaws are stricter. Deputy Mayor and I met with the company mentioned in, in the report. We met with them back in November, and they told us their light abatement, their smell abatement regulations are so tough that that's why they've had to develop the products that they have. So, so again, I do believe it's going to be beneficial to our growers. It's not going to impact the businesses that are here, because they're already supplying something that they're not needing to get overseas. So anyway, I just wanted to explain that to you, that it's different than it used to be. So appreciate it. Moving on to other matters for approval. Nothing? Are we reporting on closed session? Ms. Percy?
A closed meeting was held at 5:30 PM prior to the open session of the council meeting pursuant to subsection 239-2C of the municipal act to discuss two matters. The first item, confidential report, LLS 2319, dated April 16th, 2019, regarding disposition of lands, vacant land on Seneca Road. There's nothing further to report on this matter. The second item, verbal report with respect to potential purchase of sale of lands in the uptown. Direction was given to administration. Proper notice of the meeting was given. The meeting adjourned at 5:46 PM.
Thank you. And then consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 79-18, a bylaw to amend the comprehensive zoning bylaw, number 89009, for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject land, ZBA 186, West Side County Road 33. Bylaw 2619, a bylaw to levy taxes for the year 2019. Bylaw 2719, a bylaw to appoint commissioners and establish annual fees for the better maintenance of various municipal drainage schemes throughout the municipality. And bylaw 2819, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held April 23rd, 2019.
Moved by? Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counsel Wilkinson, all in favor? And that's carried. Notices of motion, there are none, so we're at open session. Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. First of all, I would like to wish a happy 65th birthday to Deputy Mayor Ferbicki. It is 65, isn't it? But I want to ask a couple of questions if I can, maybe of Rob. Rob, how soon do you think we're going to get the official plan? It was referenced here in one of the reports. Is it close to coming, our official plan? Paul?
I don't have a date, but we are looking at options with regard to bringing somebody on to just focus on that.
Yep. I know there's some difficulty in that department. And the other one is, we had talked prior to March about the boarding house study being done too, and I know we're a bit backed up on that too, but can we expect that in the near future as well?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm still hoping within the next couple of months, but as, as you know, we, our department has pretty well been cut in half in the last few months. So, you know, right now, we're, we're pretty well prioritizing those things that we have to get out the door, and, and while that's important, the site plan agreements and, and it is a difficult time right now.
No, I understand, and thanks for your, thanks for your answer.
Deputy Mayor?
Deputy Mayor, thanks. I'm probably going to go through you to Rob on three, three of my little questions. I've been asked, Rob, by some farmers that have driveways that don't have 911 signs. Is there an option for them to come in and purchase 911 signs on vacant property? And if so, could that be also maybe thrown in the, in the tax bill? I'll, I'll go with that one first.
Okay. Sorry, your worship, before I started talking, I just wanted to see where Laura was at in the, in the most recent tax notice mailings. To answer Deputy Mayor's question, yes, if, currently, we do not assign a municipal street address to an agricultural parcel unless the owner of that parcel requests it. And so, and we do that for a number of different planning reasons, you know, with regards to the numbers and how properties are divided and severed in the future. But the answer is yes. If, if any landowner in the municipality that currently doesn't have an assigned municipal address wishes to have a municipal address, they simply need to come into the town hall, go to the second floor, speak to the staff there. They eventually, you know, through a process, will get them assigned a municipal address, and then they can get a 911 sign ordered. I think the cost is around $90, $85, thank you, $85. And they, and then we would come up out and install a 911 sign for their property.
Okay, that's, that's cheap insurance if you, if you have to get the custom spring done, they hit the wrong field.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, before we move off that, and if, we typically use tax billing time mailings as an opportunity to, to notify residents of various things, we can include that either in this particular mailing, or if it's too late, given printing, we may add it to, to the following one.
No, that's fair, that's fair. I'm looking forward to this 2020 project. Thank you. Second one is, the county has a road cleanup form. It's a five-page application. Four pages are legal. I just want to know, is it possible that, I've had some interest in the 10th and 11th concession of groups cleaning that up and then just directing a sign. Some are the ones on Bruce Crozier Way, or even, I know Orange Line has one on Highway 77. Is that possible? Maybe something to look at too, since you're not really that deep into work? That was a sarcastic comment.
Wow.
Counselor Hammond?
Through your worship, typically, we refer to these as like a adopter road, a tech program. And I think likely the best thing to do with that be a number of different things that council should consider before adopting such a program, but we'll bring a report back to council on that.
And speaking of adopt-a-road, could I adopt a road, preferably on Erie Street South? I almost got hit again in front of Blondie's. I'd like to paint some lines on the road, so, with not invisible paint, or just repaint the lines the way they were, put it back the way they were. Thank you.
Your worship, I've been, the only reason the painting of the lines is delayed is we're simply waiting for an extended period of warm weather, you need that for the paint to stick. So, I was on staff almost every day last week, and so I'll follow up again tomorrow. I expect those lines to be repainted any day now. There was an issue with the paint being put down, the paint didn't stick, that was part of a contract, and so we've been working with the contractor to come back and repaint in order to fill their, fulfill their obligations. I'm to the point with, you know, I'll set that aside, if the paint can go down, you know, we're gonna put it down, we'll deal with the financial consequences and trying to recoup those costs later, if need be. I know right now, staff have been working with the contractor to come back and paint it.
Perfect. And my last one is, they are gonna go where they currently are, they're going back the way they were, 'cause people still don't know how to drive there.
They're going, they're going, we're repainting what was painted there last year, so it's not going back to, you know, the previous design. This particular shift was required to accommodate the bike lanes as approved in the plan. You know, it's unfortunate because it is, you know, we do have to shift the center line of road at that particular location, and certainly, you know, the paint not sticking properly didn't help our cause in bringing attention to the fact that it shifts. So, my expectation is, once the paint, you know, gets put down and it's visible, that habits will adjust.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Thank you, Rob. We're gonna stay on that topic. I swear, I had nothing to do with the deputy mayor's comments he just made. I've had it written down here for this meeting, I was hoping to have this brought up in open session as discuss the road markings from Clark to Ivan. I was hoping to have a discussion with council and staff can join in as well. But I consistently see people struggling, trying to choose what lane they're using. I see people using the bike lane as a road lane, they use it as a passing lane. I see people making corrective actions, you know, it's, which way am I going, you know? There's real uncertainty out there, it is a, you know, it's much like Danforth Street, you know, people wanna talk about it and say, what are you guys thinking, you know? And it's something out, I'm hoping that council will give their, you know, their thoughts on it, and it's something that we might review, did we make the right choices there? You know, there's nothing to say that, you know, we've, we've said in the past here, within the last year or so, if we make a mistake, you know, we'll, we'll own it, and we can always change things. It's also been said, it's only paint. So, I know the paint was gonna go down soon here, so that's why I wanted to bring it up here tonight, but I was hoping that we'd have that discussion with council here tonight, and I'm hoping to hear from the rest of the council, their thoughts.
I do have Counsel Jacobs to speak next. Can I go, can I finish going around the table?
Pardon me?
Are we going?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Or did you want to address that, Rob, or Mr. Neufeld?
Just for a second.
Sure. Just to, to put it at, either at rest or?
Yeah, my, my concern is maybe a little more procedural, that if we're about to have a discussion about something that wasn't on the agenda, that the discussion, perhaps we should be giving direction to administration to bring a report, or, I have some concerns about having a discussion here and decisions being made about something that wasn't placed on the agenda, let me just do it that way.
Did you wanna give direction? That you'd like a report?
Sure.
Is that how to do it? I think we've all fielded complaints, I think that's the basis of this.
I'm sorry, and I thought that's kinda what open session was for, I could be wrong, but I can see Peter's point of view, I appreciate that, if, I think it's time-sensitive actually, but.
Mr. Sharon?
Your worship, your worship, you know, what I would like, you know, if this appeases council, is let us get it painted, let us, let it function, review it, we'll bring a report back later in the year. I mean, we, we made the changes, contractor put the paint down, the paint didn't stick, we just wanna get it painted, let it function, let people adapt, we'll take a look at it, we can bring a report back to council near the end of the summer. I think we would be a bit rushed to immediately reverse our decision and change, you know, what we've already decided was a strategic direction, you know, based on the active transportation plan.
Are you answering that?
Yeah, I can go along with Mr. Sharon's recommendation there. Yes, as long as, at the end of the summer here, we've had a good chance to see it again with a freshly painted, maybe, I don't know, were they ever 100% fresh when they were created last fall? No? Okay, then, let's give it one more try, but yes, we're gonna have that discussion here in the future. If it's good, great, if not, so be it, we'll have that discussion. Thank you.
Okay, Rob, that's good, thank you. I had Counsel Jacobs, I do have you next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mine's a quickie, I've had a couple of inquiries regarding parking at the Rick Atkins Park. Now that the weather's nice and people wanna use the boardwalk, there's construction going on again at the apartment buildings next door, and the parking lot is packed full, 24/7 almost, and I was wondering, do we have any arrangements with them at the towers while this construction's going on? Look like to be going for a while, 'cause they can't get into their, where their basement parking is, it's all tore up, so I am assuming maybe a while there, so I don't know, is there arrangements that we have with them, or they arrange something with us?
I am, I am not aware of any arrangements, and quite frankly, I had discussions with them last summer about this very thing, and they were instructed to park on the roads in, in that area where parking is allowed. The parking at the Marina and the Rick Atkins Park is public parking for the use of our Marina and our public facilities. The managers of that building understood all too well our position, and if they are, if they have migrated back over to our parking lot, we will follow up.
They have, and it's packed, and as I say, the ones that approached me says, the weather's nice, they'd like to do the boardwalk, and there's no place to park, so, maybe somebody come down and give them a call and move them out of there and open up, thank you very much.
Further to that, if I may, you know the little cutout in front of Seacliff Park? That's also being used for overnight parking right now, I'm guessing it's forest, people that live on forest, but it is definitely overnight parking, they can get at the top of Seacliff Drive there, I'm there every morning, and there's three cars, all, there's three cars there every, every morning. So, just, just a heads up on that. Counsel Hammond, did you still have something? No? I just wanna say, it's been a busy week, but when I look at my calendar, it's probably not, oh, did you still wanna speak? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, worthy mayor, I just.
Apologize.
No, 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 it's okay, 'cause I was tossing back and forth, if I bring it up under non-debatable, then I'm not gonna get an answer. So, I just wanted to know, I guess, where this town sits with the OPP contract? Is it, is it coming up due later? Is there any talk about doing anything, or are we status quo? I'm just curious, can you enlighten me?
Ms. Horton?
Yes, that will be a matter to be brought forward within the next month or so for council to consider. The contract does end at the end of this year, so it's up for council to determine as to whether they'd like to renew the contract with the OPP, look for other potential service providers, and provide direction to administration on that.
Thank you. Just quickly, I, like I said, I've been busy every day, whether it's residents, or developers, or agencies, there's somebody in the office pretty much every day, which is great, good to know people are comfortable, reaching out. Just wanted to say to you, though, my fellow counselors, I'm doing the sleep out at the bridge on Friday night, I'd accept any sponsors if anyone wants to sponsor me. So, we're gathering there and sleeping outside.
Okay, not scared of bears?
Not worried about the bears, worried about the cold and maybe the rain. So, anyway, I think that's going to be a great initiative, there's lots of people participating. The manager at Kindred, I think, holds the highest number of donations at this point in time. So, anyway, should be a, a good night. There's also the migrant workers' health fairs is Sunday too, and the Classic Corral is doing a honoring culture in our community on Friday, Saturday night and Sunday afternoon, so, something else that you might consider attending. So, anyway, that's it for me, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. You wanna stay longer? Oh, Counsel Jacobs, Counsel Wilkinson, all in favor, and that's carried, good night.